It's the area around, so there's a large existing pond that would remain, so that would be included in that area with a walking trail around it. Um, it includes some of the areas with the parking that we've discussed. Uh, so the parking would be in in those areas. Open space is basically anything that is not in a road or in a lot. So it's a wide variety of things, but a lot of that is new strip area buffers. Um, but not on a site of this size, there is less undeveloped land. There's less non-developable land than you would expect.
All right.
It's actually surprisingly.
Have you have you met a lot of the citizens that live around there?
So I am not, I am the engineer for the project, the developer and property owner here. Um, and they would have been, uh, the people that have done those conversations.
Okay, so the developer, have you met some of the citizens that live around there? How many of them roughly have come up and patted you on the back and said, I can't wait for it? I'm not trying to be a smart alec, I'm just.
Sign in. I know it's not public hearing, but I want it.
Right, no, I just want to get a feel for something here. Brett, I've 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 heard a lot of good things about you, I've I've checked. And and you get you get a lot of a lot of credit for the way you handle your business, the way you conduct your business and the things that you do. So it's not a personal thing and I'm not attacking. I'm just curious, has anyone come up and said, I can't wait to see this next to me? I know the answer to that is probably no, right?
That's right.
Okay. I, I think that just answers my question, I just wanted to hear it from you, that's all. Thank you, Brett, I appreciate it.
Wendy, I have one question for you. The recommendation, the recommendations from the planning board.
Yes ma'am.
That are conditions of this rezon.
There are six of them.
Yes, the last one.
Yes ma'am.
The planning board is requiring that their construction plans go back to them before you do final approval, is this correct?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
I think my understanding is what they want to see before they are signed off on is that all of the conditions that they ask for are adhered to.
That's, that's what I was going to make sure, because um, that's the one thing that that I want to make sure, that all the conditions that are being set forth by the planning board are on that final design.
Wendy, can I ask a follow-up question? All those conditions have been agreed to by the the property owner, the developer?
Yes, sir.
We're talking about that, Mayor, if I may, jump in here, item number three on the findings of fact, the conditions we're speaking about. I'm I'm a little bit concerned, let me read the item of three and the findings of fact for those folks that are not aware of what it says. There are six, four items that have to be a approved and agreed to by the developer. And as uh, number three states, and I quote, that the use or development is located, comma, designed, comma, and proposed to be operated so as not to substantially injure the value adjoining or abutting property, or that the use of the development is a public necessity. Okay, so we can rule out the public necessity, probably, uh, but my question is, who is the one to, councillor, you're you're the one that should answer this question, who is the one to um, state that this, this is not going to substantially injure the value adjoining or abutting properties?
It's not a, it's not a, nobody's guaranteeing that, what it is, is that these are um, these are what you look at and consider when you decide whether to rezone a property. The applicant has made representations about whether or not they comply with that. Um, here, I believe they indicated that this surrounding property is compatible with proposed development. And it would be the town council's judgment that, you you know, that that would be something that the town council could consider, weigh, weigh whether they would, they would decrease property values or not, and in fact, add that into your decision. But there's, there's nobody's making any guarantees, there's not been any expert here to testify as to property values.
Yeah, I think that could only be, but only be served by uh, when the first person goes to sell, see what the comments are.
Wendy, I've got a question, it says here, there's only, there's gonna be one additional parking space for every three townhomes. How about extra parking spaces for the other parts of the development?
Um, if you look in the papers that were passed out as Ms. Blackman was speaking. On the second page. It's color-coded.
I got it.
The yellow ones are all townhomes.
And it says there's gonna be one additional parking space for every three town.
For every three townhomes.
My question, my question is, is there, is there gonna be any extra parking spaces for all these other?
No, those have not been figured in unless council decides to add those tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else have any questions?
The ones in blue are rear-loading. So they, all of that parking will be behind those homes, there will be no on-street parking for the ones that are in blue. But all the ones in pink are single-family front-loading.
Which means that they park in front, which they'll have a driveway.
I would just ask.
Anyone have any more questions? What is the recommendation of council?
Where you get into that, let me just make sure that you take the action appropriately, so having considered everything that's been stated here, um, if you make a motion to approve it, be sure to um, indicate that you are doing so based on the findings of fact and that you're also um, adopting the statement of consistency and reasonableness. And so in making that motion, if you vote to disapprove it, then you would state that it's not reasonable and s- and state the reasons why, so just be sure to consider um, whether it's consistent or not, and and if you believe that it is, adopt that statement of consistency or in reasonableness, or add on whatever other factors that you deem appropriate.
What is?
Um, I'll make a motion, if I may.
Okay.
Uh, and this is very difficult to do in view of, you know, where we stand in our community here. But I'm gonna make a motion, we disapprove um, the uh, the development uh, on on a variety of grounds, I guess, and I'm not sure what you want me to put in there, uh, councillor. I'm not in agreement with all the findings of fact, I disagree with number three, the value of the abutting properties and adjoining properties. And uh, personal reasons, I I I think that growth is good for everybody, we can't, we can't turn it down, but Wilson's Mills has seen its, it's, it's, uh, I don't want to say limit of growth, but I'm getting tired of it, it's gotta be, it's gotta stop somewhere, I see the county and others surround, or the county itself, Johnston County and surrounding counties. Uh, I don't see their meetings and everything, but they just approve things left and right, and I've seen the buildings and and you folks are good folks, I know you are, and your your heart is good, but I know you're gonna move on to another development from here. I I just think Wilson's Mills has not necessarily reached a limit, but something of this size and in that place. I don't see how we can, I know it's gonna be great for taxes, we're gonna get a bigger police department and all of those cool things. I don't think it does anything for the reputation of Wilson's Mills, and and it doesn't really, it doesn't really, to me, benefit anybody other than developers, number one, uh, our our tax base, but we can overcome that, so I I make a motion, we disapprove.
Gabe, is that gonna be sufficient? Okay, a motion to deny the conditional rezoning of this property. Do I have a second? Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Jernigan to deny the rezoning of this property, all in favor, let it be known by Z and I.
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, we will open our first open forum. Anyone wishing to speak to council, please come forward.
Well, um, for the record, will you indicate what the result of that vote was?
Oh, it was three, three, four, and one against. Okay. Open the first open forum, anybody coming forward to speak to council, please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes.
Ma'am, this may just be a technicality, attorney could let you know, but there were two parcels, I don't know if you technically need to to take two votes.
Yes, we do, I'm sorry. I forgot.
They have different parcel numbers, right, so um, the first one on the agenda was seventeen K zero eight zero two six. So there's an additional um, vote that needs to be had on the rezone application for parcel number seventeen K zero eight zero two six L.
For the record, your new clerk caught that, and I'm extremely proud of her.
Very good.
I make a motion that we um, we uh, deny the ordinance amending um, parcel number one seven K zero eight zero zero two six L.
You wanna, if you don't mind, the state the reasons therefore for that?
My reasons for the uh, for recommending that we deny it are identical to the reasons I I posted for the first one, is that sufficient, or do I have to go through all that again? Sufficient, good, my heart can't take it, go ahead.
Councilman McGowan made the motion to deny the rezoning of, um, I gotta get this partial number up. Partial number one seven K zero eight zero two six L, and Councilman Jernigan seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Three, four, one against, okay. Yes, for steps. I forgot there was two of them. Okay, now to the open forum. Anyone wishing to speak? No one wishing to speak? I close the open forum at seven twenty-five. We go into our regular business. And I am first on the agenda again. First thing I would like to talk about, I try to tell the people what I've been doing all month, I I do a lot of meetings and I I represent the town in a lot of different ways. Um, but the thing I would like to comment about is our Tinsel Tree Lane. It was a very good event, lighting of the Christmas trees, we had vendors and we had um, Santa Claus came to town, we had activities for the children, and it was a wonderful, wonderful event for the the town people to come out and enjoy. And uh, I really, really enjoyed being a part of that. Leanna and I also attended the Economic Development Event for their Christmas. Um, it was at the airport and we had a very good meeting, got to meet our representatives and talk with the other mayors and so forth. It was a very good time. Also, we attended the sewer, sewer and water steering committee, meeting. Um, we're still dealing with the county on trying to to get some of that straightened out, so we attended that meeting. And I attended the mayor's meeting that we was held this month. Um, it is good to sit down around a table with the mayors of Johnston County and just talk. And just find out what's going on in the other towns, what they need, what we need, how can we work together? And I will say that this year, our mayor's meetings have been very informative because we have gotten to the place that we can trust each other. And we can talk about things that are coming to our towns and problems that we're having. And believe it or not, they have some of the same problems we do. Lot of people don't realize, it doesn't really matter how big the town is. You have the same problems, they're just in a different form. And it it really helps to sit down around a table with the mayors and just talk and figure out what we need. So I will continue to do my meetings and to do whatever I can to make the town better, that's my goal, thank you. Now, our next, Ms. Leanna.
Uh, first item that you have on the agenda is the petition for annexation from Johnston County Public Schools, and you've got, I think you received an updated map when you got here this evening with the site area. This is for the new planned um, middle and high school. And all of the owners have signed the petition, which was also in your packet. So we just need you to vote on a resolution directing the clerk to investigate the petition.
Leanna, do we have to vote on both resolutions?
You have to vote on, yes, that resolution first.
Okay, do I have a, does anyone have any questions about what we're talking about, is annexing the property that will be the new Wilson Mills High School?
Looking for the property, and I've got this, Leanna.
Yeah.
With the map attached to it?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, and there should be, there's a resolution
In your.
In your packet.
Oh, in the packet?
Yeah, that's in your packet.
Directing the clerk to to investigate the.
It's right after the map that's in your packet that is. Keep going. You're still in Johnson Farms.
It's the short.
You're still in Johnson.
Right here.
Okay.
Do I have to read the whole thing, whereas, whereas?
No, no.
No? Okay, just make a, I'll make a motion that we uh, we adopt the resolution directing the clerk to investigate a petition received under General Statute one six zero A hyphen three one.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Jernigan, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Then we have the certificate of sufficiency, we don't have to vote on that one.
You do not, it's just for your information that the petition was sufficient and all owners signed it, so your next resolution, unless you have questions, would be to fix the date of the public hearing in January.
Do we have to go through the whereas stuff again? All right, I make a motion, we hold a public hearing on this, on uh, six thirty PM on January seventeen, twenty twenty-four. The resolution fixing date of public hearing on question of annexation pursuant to General Statute one six zero A hyphen five eight point two.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan. Seconded by Councilman Jernigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Couple of updates, Mayor, just not on the agenda, first of all, um, we have met with the Part F representatives about some areas at the park that we were looking to try to do a grant this spring. One of the requirements for that Part F park is the master plan, which was done the last time we applied for a Part F grant. And so it's ten years old, and they are not gonna take it, so we're gonna need to to update the master plan, and we're getting some information on some different firms that do that, so that we can put uh, RFQ out for that as well and come back to you with what those prices might be. That'll be the first step in order to get another grant to finish a lot of the stuff out at the park that we wanted to do. However, we've been talking with um, Ted from the rugby club about the lights at the park, because that was the number one priority for this grant. They have lights that have been donated, but we were looking for this Part F grant to have them installed and to also do a a building out in the center that would serve as a storage area, meeting space, extra restrooms, that sort of thing. And we're working on the the lighting situation, we're hoping that that's something that we can do out of budget before we would apply for another grant next spring, so not spring of twenty-four, but twenty-five. So we'll be talking about that in some of our budget sessions, getting some prices back to you, because it would be above my threshold if that's something that you wanted to do out of the additional funds that you set aside this year for plans and updating the park, so I'll get back with you about those prices after the first of the year. Um, the second thing that I wanted to discuss with you is the possibility of doing work sessions once a month, would be preferable if you decide you wanted to try it out and do it maybe every other month, but I think with the growth and all of the projects that the town has going on, a work session every month prior to your regular meeting is not uncommon, almost every other town has these work sessions, they are open meetings, they are public open meetings. Um, but it gives you a chance to kind of drill down on the different departments and projects and have some open discussion. There's not any action taken at these meetings, the work session or agenda review, some people call it different things. But this, again, this just gives you a chance to really have a deeper discussions about the projects that you have going on to prepare for what you want on your agenda at the regular meeting. And that's something that I would like for you to consider, if you want to make a decision tonight, fine, if not, I'd love to be able to know something by January, so we can prepare staff, and you would also need to approve a schedule for those work sessions. And it's um, it's, as far as the attorney is concerned, the attorney's welcome and and can be here if it's a situation where we have a project we need to talk about that he may need to come in on, but it's not normally something that that a contract attorney would attend, so there wouldn't be any extra cost involved with that.
It would, it would just be a a time for us when if a department head had a project that they wanted to bring before us, they could sit down and give us all the information and we could ask questions. And then if we didn't, if they didn't have the answers, they could go get those answers for us, so that when we come to our regular meeting, then we would have more information, because sometimes things come before us that we have questions about, but our staff has not had the time to find those answers. It would just be more information for us.
I feel like these sessions would also prepare you a little better for your budget sessions in the spring, rather than trying to have three or four budget sessions to look at all of the different where you approve your budget, you've been talking about this stuff all year. And it it's less formal, and there's no, again, there's no public comment, there's no action taken, no votes, but they're still public open meetings, so they would be open to the public.
I'd I'd be, I'd be uh, agreeable to that, as long as we can look at it and see what we got accomplished and what good it's doing, if it doesn't work, then we want to be able to stop. Oh, it just tells me that we're we're discussing these meeting items just before we come to the meeting to discuss them again.
Say that again now?
It it's it's sort of like a pre-meeting, meeting. We're going to discuss projects that we usually discuss here that the the citizens are able to listen to and and we're talking back and forth again. It's the same sort of.
It is, but it's be, it's becoming a lot for one meeting every month.
Okay, if it is.
And it can, it's, it's, it's a time to dig a little deeper into each department and the different projects, just like what we talked about tonight. Or what I just mentioned with the party, I'd like, I'd like to have a chance to sit down and go over the old plans versus the new plans and talk with you, but that's a lot for a regular meeting.
Okay.
A lot of times councils will meet and have a work session to get into the weeds a little more about things, and it's not anything that is private or closed, it's, again, it's all open session, it's public meeting, anybody can listen in, attend. Um, there's just not an open forum, that would be more like a community engagement meeting for the bigger projects.
And most of the time, councils don't take votes at that meeting, because it is considered a work session, in other words, you're just getting information.
If we do this, I would just like to make sure that once we come to our regular scheduled meeting like tonight, we have a summation of what we talked about, so we don't have to go over it again, but for citizens that come in, they say, I didn't have a chance to come to your pre-meeting, so
Sure.
we need to have a summation, so they understand exactly what we're talking about.
Nothing would change about the regular meeting, as far as the information that you're given or that you talk to the public about on items that you're taking action for. I think what would be different is that at at this additional meeting prior to your other one, and it doesn't always have to be just about what's at the upcoming meeting, it can be a chance for you to really talk about in detail the specific projects that we've got going on, because there are a lot of projects going on, and I think that um, you know, we try to keep you as informed as we can about those along the way, but then we run into getting into an email with a reply all and public meeting laws and things like that, so we want a chance to have another meeting where we can talk more about this stuff to all of you as a council without doing it the wrong way, so.
The good side of this, I think, another good side is the fact that the citizens, when they when they, if they go to that meeting and then come to our regular meeting, which we certainly hope you will, they'll be more informed uh, overall, they'll have time to go home and think about or do their research and ask questions on certain items that we spoke about.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's one of our biggest things right now is community engagement, so we would love to see this many people at a meeting who aren't upset about something. We'd love to have you back all next month, just to hear what we have going on that you're happy about, so. Um, but our our staff is working really hard on this community engagement stuff, and we have four different teams working separately on several different projects to try to engage the community, and I think this is just gonna be one more way for the community to have a chance to hear more of the detail about what's done every day, I mean, we we have so much going on that we want people to be involved and we want them to understand what's happening and what our staff is doing, because they're doing a lot.
Yes, they are, it's a lot going on in town that we can't all, it's just, you're just so much. Okay, you have anything else?
I don't.
You you don't, okay. Ms. Sherry, Finance Officer.
Good evening, Council, in your package you have the November financial statement, you have any questions?
You expected this, right?
Sure.
I knew you did, on the cover page, it's third paragraph, second paragraph.
That's the type of.
Tightened, it shouldn't say November.
It should say December, yes.
December, I do read it. Um, the other one is on governing board expenditures, um, town hall interest.
Right.
I see it's uh, the, see the two hundred and twenty percent, it's not a, it's not a big deal. Budget was forty-eight seventy, actual year-to-date is ten thousand seven, so we're over by five, five thousand eight, and it's for interest, can you just enlighten us as to what the interest is on that?
Which one is that, Mr.?
Uh, item, uh, line item, seven twenty. Governing board expenditures, all the way down the bottom.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Next to the last.
Governing board expenditures, interest, that is where wh- whenever we were having our budget sessions, we had one amortization schedule in the beginning for the new lawn we took out for town hall, but there was an updated one that had come out after that, and it wasn't this number, so it, but it just changed, the new amortization just changed the payment date.
Okay.
But that number couldn't be changed, because it was already um.
All right, go over two pages to um, public works expenditures and mid, mid-page, item three five one, maintenance, building and grounds.
Um, we've had a lot and an extreme amount of trees that have fallen. Also, we entered into a contract with a pest control company for the building, and so that's, if we have to hire a contractor to get the trees up, that's expensive. have to hire a contractor to get the trees up, that's expensive. But if Patrick does it himself, he has to rent equipment because we don't have it. And that's expensive as well.
At some time, I guess, in this budget session, I want to make sure that we address that.
Oh, sure.
Because if he's renting, going out and paying retail prices, renting or something to take trees down, we need to look at that.
Right.
We got a lot of trees.
Exactly.
We just saved a lot of trees too.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well.
Anyone else have question for Sherry?
Any other questions, Council?
Have, have we heard anything about the monies from the state yet?
Well, I think I told you all that we definitely got it.
Yeah.
And we, I've submitted the paperwork and they are still supposed to be reaching out to me to schedule a meeting.
I thought that was the last thing you had told and I, okay, so you haven't scheduled that?
Still waiting on the state for that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Council. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Planning and zoning, Wendy?
Does anyone have any questions on the staff report this month?
Major changes? I mean, we're going through and reading it, but I don't want you to have to read everything in here. Are there any major changes we need to be aware of?
No.
Okay, thank you.
The Willis Crossin project. Are they the grading and infrastructure, is that about finished? I mean, are they?
They are still working on that because they've had to bore under the road. I think it was a sewer line they had to bore under to hook to a manhole on the other side, maybe. And they were trying to get that in place before they actually started packing and constructing the streets and installing the infrastructure.
Okay, so that's what that was. Anybody have any questions for Wendy? Thank you, Wendy.
As the mayor said, Tinsel Tree Lane was a huge success. We had a lot of our vendors there that said they would like to come to the community market. So I've reached out to them and invited them to fill out an application for that. I gave each of you a pamphlet that we made up for what's happening in Wilson's Mills. It's got all of our events for next year. We handed those out at Tinsel Tree Lane. And I've got a few more up here. If anyone in the audience would like to grab one on their way out. And that's it. If you've got any questions, I'm here for you. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Chief?
You've got my report in front of you. You have any questions?
I have a question. On your, on your page, again, thank you very much for the, for the chart. I, I think that's great, but could I be a real difficult council member and request that you transfer some of that data to a what's, what's the kind of chart I'm looking at that, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a graph chart, yeah, and it shows and I need the months underneath this one. You have the months as, you know, one through eight, and then I have to go up top.
Sure.
And match it up. If you could just put the months down there. But is there a possibility you could transform this into one of those charts with the little dots all over it so I could?
Absolutely.
You can do that for me? You're doing this great. I mean, I shouldn't. You did this and you didn't have to, and I appreciate it, but if you could do that.
Yeah, so we'll move from the bar chart to the
Yeah, I just
Graph. Not a problem.
Thank you. We'll see, we'll see which one works. We can come back to this. Right. Okay, thank you. And Chief, quick question for you. Were we supposed to get our motor vehicle status report this month?
No, that's going to come in January. We had done it this month. You wouldn't have December figures.
Oh, good, okay. Good point. All right. Thank you. I wasn't thinking that far. That's why you're the chief and I'm not.
I ain't done sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
If, if you don't mind, I got about two or three minutes. I want to recognize it's my fault. I did not put it on the agenda. But for those of you who don't know, we have twenty-two officers here in Wilson's Mills. We've got twelve full-time and ten part-time. And each year we recognize what we call our Top Cop or Officer of the Year Award. This year's recipient is an officer who has worked at WMPD as a part-time officer. They started and then short time after that transitioned to full-time. This individual has a knack for finding themselves in multiple life-saving events, one of which an award was given last year when they saved a young man's life with the assistance of another officer. In September, two self-described very frightened and rattled elderly, young elderly women, they wrote a letter of commendation for this officer for thanking them for stopping in the middle of the night when their vehicle hit a, a guard rail on Highway seventy. They were impressed with this officer's professionalism and compassion and just decided it was worthwhile to write me a letter and tell me about it. This year's recipient, recipient of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty twenty-three Top Cop Award goes to Erin Sinclair, our full-time officer. I would like to quote something from the email, which I thought was, you know, you don't, we don't normally get that. We when, when people do that. The email stated, Officer Sinclair, she was not faster than a speeding bullet, nor did she leap tall buildings in a single bound. But she was truly our hero that night, and they really appreciate it. From two women in the middle of the night, they were, they were frightened. And Claire stopped and rented assistance. So this year's recipient.
Yes, yes, yes. I'll stand up for her. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, thank you. All y'all did. We've got a whole house full of all this. Yeah, yeah.
I, I just wanted to say a few words to everybody. I know that I'm receiving this award. And I thought about what I was going to say when I was on the way up here. And I really, I'm glad to receive this award, but at the same time, I really want to give credit to where credit is due. There's been a lot of days that I come every day, but most days I try to pray to God that he can use me as a servant. I'm not perfect by no means whatsoever, but I have, I've prayed a lot and you know, God has really helped these people. I haven't been able to help everybody, but just, just keep in mind that with God, anything is possible. And I just, I just had to say that. I just, I had to just talk about my faith for a moment. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for all the work that all the officers do. Thank y'all for showing up tonight, too. We appreciate every one of you, every one of you.
Good evening, Council. You guys have my report. Any questions? I just want to say thank you. You do a lot of work, too, an awful lot of work. So thank you for all the stuff that you do in keeping, keeping the town running. All right. Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
For those that you don't know, I'd like to thank you personally for being there when I said let's light the Christmas tree and we counted to ten and we got to ten and all of a sudden they all came on. I was just praying, Patrick, where are you? Where are you? Thank you so much. For those of you that don't know, this ends our first session because we have some new council people coming on tonight. And they have to be sworn in so that we can finish our meeting. And they, okay, I think the first one is going to be Carolyn, you're first. And Ms. Addie is going to Yeah. Yes, please do.
Good afternoon. It's a privilege and an honor to the Honorable Councilor here today. What a wonderful opportunity to see growth in our town. I was here. House down the road still, church right up the street. And I'm grateful for that and certain that commend our police department, our top cop. You go.
That is so awesome. They stopped before I could join the picture so we could show that we girls really rock. Appreciate you. Thank you, Chief, for your wonderful work.
My privilege and honor to swear in our councilwoman, Carolyn Dobbin. If you would now place your left hand on the Bible, raise the right hand and repeat after me. I, say your name, Carolyn Dobbin, do solemnly and sincerely swear
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
and maintain the Constitution
And maintain the Constitution.
of the United States
Of the United States.
that I will be faithful
That I will be faithful
and bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
To the state of North Carolina
and to the constitutional powers
And to the constitutional power
and authorities
And authorities
and that which are
which are
and that which are
or may be established
or may be established
for the government thereof
for the government thereof and that I
and that I
will endeavor to support
will endeavor to support
maintain
maintain
and defend
and defend
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
to the best of my knowledge
to best of my knowledge
and ability
and ability
so help me God
so help me God
I
I
your name
Carolyn Dobbin
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will well
that I will well
and truly execute
and truly execute
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of town council member
of town council member
for the town of Wilson's Mills
for the town of Wilson's Mills
according to the best
according to the best
of my skill
of my skills
and ability
and abilities
according to law
according to law
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations, Councilwoman Dobbin.
I'm proud of you. Lovely. Thanks.
Ms. Dobbin, you need to sign. That's a safe trip. Now, JC.
Mayor, do you mind holding the Bible for Mr. Trippit, please? I state your name
I, J.C. Trippit.
do solemnly and sincerely
do solemnly and sincerely
swear that I
swear that I
will support and maintain
will support and maintain
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
that I will be faithful and true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
to the state of North Carolina
and to the constitutional powers
and to the constitutional power
and authorities which are
and authorities which are
or may be established
or may be established
for the government thereof
for the government thereof
and that I will endeavor to support
endeavor to support
maintain and defend
maintain and defend
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
to the best of my knowledge
to the best of my knowledge
and ability so help me God
so help me God
I state your name
I, J.C. Trippit
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will well and truly
that I will well and truly
execute the duties
execute the duties
of the office
of the office
of town council member
town council member
for the town of Wilson's Mills
town of Wilson's Mills
according to the best
according to the best
of my skill and ability
of my skill and ability
according to law
according to law
so help me God
so help me God
Now that we have our new Old Town Council in place, so glad y'all are back with us. We need to go into the organization of the Town Council and we need to appoint a mayor pro temp. Okay.
Should we reappoint Mayor Pro Temp, J.C. Trippit, back to his original position? I second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilman Jernigan and seconded by Councilman McGowan to appoint J.C. Trippit as our mayor pro temp. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Thank you again. Now. Now you go.
I state your name
I, J.C. Trippit
do solemnly and sincerely
do solemnly and sincerely
swear that I
swear that I
will support and maintain
will support and maintain
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
that I will be faithful
that I will be faithful
and bear true allegiance
and bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
to the state of North Carolina
and to the constitutional powers
and to the constitutional power
and authorities which are
and authorities which are
or may be established
or may be established
for the government thereof
for the government thereof
and that I will endeavor to support
and I will endeavor to support
maintain and defend
maintain and defend
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
to the best of my knowledge
to the best of my knowledge
and ability
and ability
so help me God
so help me God
I state your name
I, J.C. Trippit
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will well and truly
that I will well and truly
execute the duties
execute the duties
of the office of Mayor Pro Temp
of the office of Mayor Pro Temp
for the town of Wilson's Mills
for the town of Wilson's Mills
according to the best of my skill
according to the best of my skill
and ability
and ability
according to law
according to law
so help me God Yay! I may be changed now. I'm going to start if you could sign it next month because that's so touching.
At this time, we would like to give, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I forget I got to swallow it. At this time, we'd like to give J.C. a chance if he would like to make any comments.
Not, I won't say much. It's been a hard year. But thanks to everybody for helping me out. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Carolyn, would you like to make any comments?
Well, I don't know, J.C. making me cry. So I don't know. But I do want to first thank my daughters. I thank God, first of all. And I want to say thank you to my daughters who has been supporting me along the way. Sometimes I felt like, well, anyway, I, I just, I just thank them for the love and support that they have given me. Also, thanks to my family, other family and friends, and especially the citizens of Wilson's Mills who voted again for me for another term. I appreciate your support from the bottom of my heart. And I do look forward to working and serving with y'all again. This has been a learning experience for me and we all are still learning. Nobody is exempt. And to the council, administrative staff, our mayor, I am grateful for each of you. And I do look forward to working with you again this time.
Thank you, Carolyn. Does any of the council have anything they want to say?
Since he's not going to cut his mic on, I'd like to thank Carolyn and J.C. Look for another two more years of getting everything done for the town. Glad to have him back. Or looking for me to say something. I've said enough tonight. He, he gave me an amen, so I will shut up.
I just like to say that I'm looking forward to another year as we move forward with the events that are coming before us and the projects that are ahead of us. I just hope that we can continue to work together as a council and agree sometime to disagree and a lot of time just to agree. And I thank y'all for that. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn? Oh, I got the second, okay. Does anyone have any comment? They would like to come before I open the second open forum? If you, anybody would like to comment, come forward to the microphone. So you, you need to come forward.
It's going out, it's on YouTube and everything, so we also have all comments.
If you could state your name, though, we do need that.
Mary Rochanna, A533 Jones Road. You were talking about the different projects. Is the minutes of your meeting is in the webpage so we can go read it?
Yes, yes.
Which is?
Yes.
So we actually have a webpage in Wilson's Mills?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. And thank you very much.
Anyone else like to make a comment? No one else wishing to come forward? I will close the open forum.
I'll second that.
Councilman Jernigan made the motion to adjourn. Councilman McGowan seconded, all in favor? Good night, everyone, and Merry Christmas.